...session on September sixth, twenty sixteen, ten AM, the Commissioner's Court, ring, County Administration Building, two hundred and six, Texas Avenue, Suite one oh six. First item on the agenda, certification, pledge allegiance to US Texas flag, Captain Jones, Commissioner Catalina, you lead.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, and we want to thank you for this day, thank you for watching over us, each of us, at this good opportunity, and see this day, realizing that we cannot make it alone in this world by ourselves, we need guidance, and we need your direction, as I commend you, your commission, as they do business for Bradis County, always easy and guided, in the right direction, and in the right man. Pray for the Bradis County Court, our family, pray for Texas, pray for America, pray for our troops, pray for all of our law enforcement officers who lie, are in jeopardy each day. Now God be with us throughout the day. This is amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Detective Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner, Captain Jones. Second item will be against, since it's included in our conference. Here, now, we'll consider, take action on agenda items three through twenty. Number three is proclamation sixteen dash zero three zero, declaring Tuesday, October fourth, twenty sixteen, is national night out.
Motion, first.
Second. Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number four is approval of job description, temporary attendant building grounds, class code zero eight three two, position fifteen, next position, conflict.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number five, request approved contract between Brazos County and Texas Voting Systems for Election Services, on November eighth, twenty sixteen, general election.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number six is approval of the, uh, end of, or agreement for, with Infinity Networks Inc., assigning NCIC inmate telephone services as provided for inmate telephone service.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number seven, discuss, take possible action on contract with youth advocate programs Inc., juvenile integration services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And motion carries, number eight is award and approval of contract bid, twenty sixteen dash one ninety, going to drive median improvements, with Frank and son, Dozer Works LLC, in the amount of sixty one thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number nine is approval of contract seventeen dash zero one zero, citizen collection site trash pickup.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number ten is approval of con-
Judge, that was, Judge, that was two award.
Oh, award, the, uh, two.
Texas commercial waste, I believe, on that one.
So, if that's included in the, uh, do you have the motion on that?
Catalina.
Catalina, you want to add?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in that motion.
Yeah. And second was?
I did.
Okay. So, there, it's amended to include that.
Okay.
And, uh, Texas commercial waste. Vote again, I guess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number ten is approval of contract seventeen dash zero one two, quarter one, toilet rental for Bradis County, and that is.
I believe it's Texas commercial waste as well, yes, sir.
I'll, I'll firm motion to approve the award.
Second.
Motion made, second, to approve the award to Texas commercial waste.
Ask for it.
Two more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number eleven is final plot of Jones Road Business Park, block one, block one, seven point five, zero seven acres, TJ Woo Lee, eight fifty-nine, crying ETJ, Brazos County, Texas sites located, verse four.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number twelve is tax refund application for follow.
I move your approval of your refund for eight group D.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number thirteen is Commissioner's Court Minutes for following dates.
I move approval, A through L.
Second.
Motion made, second, uh, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number fourteen is budget numbers, budget numbers FY fifteen slash sixteen, forty-nine point one through forty-nine point five.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, now, we'll go fifteen, which is the adoption, I'll, per county budget for fiscal year ending September thirty, twenty seventeen, and we, we've got some amendments to the budget that need to be voted on separately, so, uh, the first go through.
Actually, I, I did want to try to change it a little bit, where I get, precinct three, from a part-time to a full-time position, and then add a deputy.
Well, it's flipped in, which is opposed, but it's doing from part-time to full-time.
Yes, and, uh, full-time, it's like a, there.
So, if you want two full-time, is that what you said?
Ultimately, you land up, yeah, two, I believe, that's correctly.
No, he was, uh, for, what's in the budget, like, a part-time, so, you want a part-time and a part-time, uh, the full-time is in the budget.
He's already got, he's got, what he, what's he got, the positions that he's got right now. What we did, uh, last year, we increased his, uh, because of truancy, as I can do truancy with a part-time position, so, we shifted that part-time position to JP person three, to handle, uh, truancy, which he's done this past year. He's come back to us, and, uh, and I was willing and did plug in to increase that part-time position to a full-time position.
Uh, I think we want to keep the part-time to.
Okay. Well, if we were to, if, if we were to do something like that now, then that would make the budget that we're going to adopt, not, not right, we'd have to go back and re-figure a lot of it, is that not right, Irene?
There is not a motion on there for a part-time, but, uh, the commission will add that, I would have to calculate that.
And, and that's what we do for any of the amendments, so.
So.
As far as the Boden Indivisible.
Well, I'll tell you what, let's, let's go through these, these twenty that we've got on here, and then when we get to the, to the last one.
No, fifteen.
We can, you want to make motions, could you add that, and we'll, we'll have that too.
Sure.
Okay. The amendments are corrections to the proposed budget. Uh, the first is, uh, to properly read, to properly classify teacher class code eighteen fifty-three, position one, from hourly staff pay code zero one four to hourly staff pay code zero one three, to comply with final rule of DOL, open, DOL overtime rules, uh, move, uh, forty thousand, seven hundred and six from the hourly staff to hourly, from hourly staff to salary staff account.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That, number two is, uh, general capital projects and general fund contingency, is to decrease computer software by sixty-eight hundred dollars, decrease the transfer from general fund by sixty-eight hundred dollars, and reduce the transfer to capital improvement by sixty-eight hundred dollars, and increase general fund contingency sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a question. Has this been, uh, reviewed by IT? How is this gonna affect IT's budget?
Roden Bridge purchased this, uh, software in sixteen.
Okay. They already have it? So, it makes no, okay, all right, thank you for the clarification.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number three is general capital projects and general fund contingency, decrease general capital program fund forty-three thousand, and decrease the, the transfer from general fund by forty-three thousand, reduce transfer capital improvements by forty-three thousand, and increase the general fund contingency by forty-three thousand. Purchased car for constable three six four earlier to expedite and replace the vehicle involved in collision.
I move your approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number four is contingency non-departmental, uh, increase non-departmental by nine hundred and sixty-six dollars to allow purchase of a computer to monitor for bail, and to increase the use and used general fund bail balance contingency by nine hundred and sixty-six dollars for three sixty-first district court.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number four, five is contingency non-departmental, increase non-departmental twenty-two thousand, five hundred for the AHU drive replacement for Brazos County, Brazos Center, and increase the use of general fund contingency by twenty-two five.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number six is general fund contingency non-departmental, decrease general fund contingency by sixty-one hundred dollars, and increase non-departmental budget by sixty-one hundred dollars, purchase two self-contained breathing apparatus for detention facility.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, number seven is county auditor and general fund contingency, decrease assistant county auditor two, class code oh three one seven, position three, group, not, uh, applicable step, not applicable, from twenty-one, uh, seventy per hour to twenty-one fifty-two per hour, and this will decrease the auditor's budget and salary and related benefits by four hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and increase the general fund balance by four hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And motion carries. Uh, number eight is general fund contingency human resources, increase the HR specialist class code, I can determine, position one, group fourteen, step two, from fifteen dollars and thirty cents an hour to sixteen dollars and seven cents an hour, this will increase the human resource budget for salary related benefit from nineteen hundred and fifty-nine dollars, uh, and increase the use of general fund contingency by nineteen hundred and fifty-nine.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number nine is road and bridge and general fund capital improvements, decrease the general fund road and bridge, uh, capital in the amount of two million, two hundred thousand, and increase the transferred capital improvement fund by two point two million, increase transfer in general, uh, by two point two million, and increase the general capital improvement fund, uh, roads capital by two point two million, for improvements on Mason Verdy Road and Arrington Road.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number ten is law enforcement education fund, to decrease the restricted fund balance for law enforcement education fund in two thou, two thousand, five hundred and four dollars, and decro, decrease Leo's, uh, constable precinct three by sixteen hundred and thirteen dollars, and decrease Leo sheriff's account by eight hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number eleven, general fund contingency non-departmental, increase CBRN economic development foundation revenue by a hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars, and professional fees by a hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars, for the mi- mi- mi culant road construction project.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And number twelve is, uh, grant fund, tax risk control grant, uh, increase revenue from tax risk control reimbursement grant by twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, and contract services by twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, and repair on the roof, administration building, uh, project is not, was, is not completed, uh, FY twenty sixteen.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number thirteen is general fund contingency and general capital improvements, uh, to add twenty-five thousand, detention expansion design cost for the detention center, uh, increase use of general fund contingency by twenty-five thousand, increase transfer to general capital improvement fund, increase transfer in general fund, and increase building renovation jail, all by twenty-five thousand.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number fourteen is general fund contingency non-departmental, to increase the use of general fund contingency by eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, the tax office redundant connection project, which was not completed in FY twenty sixteen, uh, fiscal year twenty sixteen, increase the network maintenance cost by eighty-nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, being non-departmental.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number fifteen is general fund contingency and justice piece precinct three, delete clerk one, JP three, class code zero six two three, position one, group ten, step two, pay code uh, zero one six, part-time, create clerk one, JP three, class code zero six oh four, position two, group ten, step two, pay code zero one four, full-time, this will increase the justice piece precinct three's budget by twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars, decrease justice piece precinct three's hourly and part-time, uh, account, uh, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by twenty-eight thousand, five forty-seven.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion.
I think this is the one that I'm going to try to, how to change.
It's just, okay, this is, I failed just, uh, to get in the budget, including a part-time position or full-time position, uh, in the JP, so, this is correct. Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number sixteen is, uh, three sixty-first district court, general fund contingency, decrease court reporter, reporter, three sixty-first district court, class code twenty-five thirty, position one, group twenty-five, step twelve, group, uh, not, sort of applicable step, not applicable, from twenty-eight hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents per pay, to twenty-seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and maybe a little cents per pay, this will decrease these three sixty-first district court salary related benefits, uh, budget by seventeen hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and increase the use of general fund budget by seventeen hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number seventeen is sheriff's administration and general fund contingency, decrease clerk one, evidence, class code fourteen thirty-five, position five, group ten, step seven, to group ten, step five, and increase the program coordinator, class code fourteen forty-one, position one, group fourteen, step nine, to group fourteen, step ten, this will decrease the sheriff's administration, um, salary and related benefits by six hundred and ten dollars, and increase the, the general fund contingency by six hundred and ten dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number eighteen is, uh, collections, decrease, uh, or two collections, class code seventeen thirty, position one, group eleven, step seven, to group eleven, step six, and increase clerk three collections, class code seventeen thirty-one, position two, group twelve, step ten, group two, groups twelve, step eleven, this will increase the collection salary and related benefits by hundred and fifty-one dollars, and increase the use of general fund contingency by hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number nineteen is general detention and general administration, move salary and benefits and longevity from detention counselor, class code twenty-eight eleven, position one, group twenty, step ten, pay code zero one four, paper, pay code zero one three, from Juco detention, three one zero zero zero, two zero zero, to Juco administration, three one zero zero zero, one zero zero, this will decrease Juco detention budget by seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, and increase Juco administration budget by seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number twenty is general fund contingency non-departmental, uh, increase the use of general fund contingency by seventy-seven hundred dollars, and increase non-departmental equipment over budget by seventy-seven hundred dollars, purchase eight ballistic helmets.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Irene, I'm sure it's right, but is one supposed to be decreased, or are they both decreased?
The general fund contingency.
It says increase contingency and increase non-departmental, I didn't know if one of them was.
We're going to decrease.
Okay, but what it says is.
You have decreased contingency.
Yes, but.
And that's her question, that was her question, you're right.
Yeah, but it says increase.
Increase, increase.
Increase the use of it, so, I'm using some contingency to cover the cost of that expense. Okay, okay.
I'm sorry it's a late time, but I think that, uh, Constable Free, uh, needs a little help, so, I think we need to make from part-time to a full-time, um, and add professional corporate.
That's already there, so we don't.
And then, I want to add a part-time.
And I'll second that.
To add a part-time position to the budget.
Yeah.
Additional to the, uh, proposed budget is.
So much of the, the truancy for both school districts, and all the work that they have to do, and they're not able to get it all done, and so, I think they need a little bit of that.
Well, I would just tell you, I disagree.
Okay.
I, uh, we, we gave him a part-time last year to handle the truancy, and then added, uh, we took away that part-time, but added a full-time, so, he's got a full-time position to handle the workload that he's got, in my opinion, and, and I have been there, uh, I have been a constable, so, I, I understand workload, and I understand how it works, and I understand how to get things over, uh, we did that, in fact, uh, by, this is proposed budget, has got more staff than, you know, than I ever had as constable, and I can tell you, I did, I did a lot of time with that stuff. Well, you know, you can work hard, I don't care what time it is, whether it's, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, or today, in my opinion, you need to get your job.
And I think, Judge, in respect, uh, of, uh, Constable, he's trying, and he's attempted several times to prove his point, I, I'm in favor of, um, allowing him the part-time person at this time, and if it's, um, if it doesn't prove out, then we can do something different, but it appears that he needs the person.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to add, uh, the twenty-first item come into budget, to add a part-time deputy position to Constable precinct three. Now, should we, back to my question earlier, Irene, if, if we were to do something like this, then that would, what effect does that have on the budget that's it is to, to approve today?
It, it won't increase the total budget, it will, it will, it will decrease contingency, um, and, and, of course, you make a motion to reduce the budget involving, um.
And, and that's what we do in all of this, that's why we've read each individual, um, made adjustments, so, we're right in line with the regular procedure.
I haven't calculated that, uh, so, I can't tell you what that amount is, uh, but I will do that if, um, the court approves it.
Thank you. Certainly, thank you. All for the question.
All right, the, uh, the additional amendment is to add a part-time position, uh, in addition to what's already been added to Constable precinct three, uh, all in favor, uh, must raise hands on that, all in favor, lift your right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion favors. Um, so, let's see, now, we need to make, we need a motion to adopt the twenty-seventeen budget with amendments. I move.
I'll, okay, and I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, to adopt the, uh, twenty-seventeen budget with amendments.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to read what the amount ends in?
No.
I think that's coming up.
We have to redo it, but it's not required. As long as it's with all the amendments, um. Okay.
Okay. Then, if that finishes, fifteen, then sixteen is resolution sixteen dash zero one six, levying a tax rate in Brazos County for tax year twenty sixteen, and we're going to need to have two separate votes on that, uh, one for maintenance and operations for that, for that tax rate, and then for the debt rate, so, first one would be, uh, and, but it'd still be a total of point four eight five, which is the same tax rate we had last year, but let's, let's take the separate votes, uh, the maintenance and operation portion is point four two five eight.
Can we call a motion, that we've done that question?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to accept the maintenance and operations, point four two five eight, any discussion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. Number four is, or not number four, but the next portion of it is to, uh, the debt rate for the payment of principal and interest for county debt and it's point zero five nine two. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve.
Judge, uh, can you repeat that again?
Point zero five nine two, is that correct?
Yes. I just kept thinking. I wanted to hear the year.
Yeah, point zero five nine two. Uh, and that's for, uh, the, uh, principal and interest for county debt. And I need, did I get a motion today?
Yes, for count of seconds.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. No motion carries. And then I think I need to read this is, and I'll just go ahead and make the motion. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate, uh, point four eight five, which is effectively a, uh, four point zero one percent increase in the tax rate.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. And then the number seventeen is a ratification of property tax increase due to the adoption of the budget that will require more revenue for property taxes in the previous year. And this budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by three million, a hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars, or four point seven nine percent. And of that amount, two million, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and nine, two million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and six cents is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax rolls this year. And we need a motion and a second for that ratification.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. Number eighteen is the adoption of the Brazos County salary schedule for fiscal year twenty seventeen.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. Yeah, and I. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I do, yeah, but I just, um, just don't go there for sure, so.
Pardon me?
Lord, there's a.
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing it.
Yeah, well, and I'm not sure that, that since the expo isn't under us, I'm not sure that that can even happen, can it? Do you know? I, I believe this is your son.
Well, let me explain how that happened. I told him to go out and apply for a job January, beginning January. I can't beat this.
Well, but I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure, Ken, I don't, I've always been of the opinion that, that, uh, within that circle, that you couldn't work for one of us and really that's, the expo works for one of us, I think. I mean, you know, the expo's.
All five, though.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just want to, um.
Kenny, I, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing the conversation on this end. What's the issue?
About nepotism.
Okay.
Um, and there's a personal action form for a, uh, relative of Commissioner Wasserman.
Okay.
But my gut wants to say an elective official hiring one of their relatives directly, but not all five of you. Um, 'cause he doesn't control the director.
We have our legal counsel.
Yeah, he'd be fine.
See you.
Good.
I think he's trying to cover his head. I don't know if he's in employment while you're there.
Just go ahead and vote on it, all either confirmed.
Okay, if it, if it was working directly for elected history, you couldn't do it. Right.
But I think because it's, it's really working for the department yet, uh, I think it's, you know, maybe it'll all confirm.
Okay, that's fine. I'd like to, are, are you gonna call for it?
Motion made for motion approved.
And I'll second that.
Motion made seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. One extension. Okay.
Thank you.
Twenty is payment of claims, uh, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number seven one four seven eight six seven through claim number seven one four eight zero eight three.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number twenty-one is acknowledgement of money reports submitted in August, August of twenty sixteen. Number twenty-two, sheriff's report on inmate population weight.
For Judge Fisher's, uh, six hundred and twenty-four, uh, overnight, forty-three on ankle monitors and attention.
Thank you.
Number twenty-three is announcement of interest items and possible futures, agenda topics. Here are none, no force call for citizens input and concern. Thank you.